Husker Van Thor.
What the hell was that?
Call this meeting to order, the city council meeting for Tuesday, January 18th, 2022. The record showed that all members of the city council are present as well as members of the city staff. We also have numerous members of the public. I would like to remind the members of the public to please sign the roll out in the foyer if you have not done so. It helps us keep an accurate attendance for this meeting. I've asked Ms. Como, our human resources director, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now, as is customary, we'll take a moment of silence. I would ask, as we do this, that you keep in mind, the members of our police and fire departments, as they are out protecting the members of the city. Also, please keep in mind the members of the city council tonight, as they make decisions that impact the residents of our city. Thank you. We now have a time for public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to come up to the microphone, address the city council, state your name, share any ideas or concerns that you might have. No action will be taken during this time, but we do welcome your comments. We ask that you try to keep them to about three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to presentations and reports. First is mayor's report. I just wanted to let the council know, the legislative session did begin today, and I did have a meeting with Senator Milner last week. She was very interested in what the concerns are of the people that are in her district. We had a good, productive meeting, but I would encourage you to stay connected with, like, the Utah League of Cities and Towns, watch for those daily emails, see what's going on, and if there is a call to action where we need to reach out, and especially if it affects our city, I'd ask that you try to reach out and make those connections. Also, at a meeting with Wasatch Front Regional Council, and we talked about some of the trails, the active transportation. I was put on that committee, the active transportation committee, and then I have a meeting with UDOT in about three weeks, so if you have any concerns or anything you'd like me to bring up with them, and that goes for you guys as well, please let me know, so I can reach out to them. I have a couple of things I want to talk to them about, but if you have any concerns or anything that we can talk to them about, it'll have a time for me to have just their ear, so that'll be good. All right, we'll now move on to the city administration report.
Thank you, Mayor. Department heads' reports are all included in there. I don't know if you have any questions on that. There is one part, the staffing authorization and employee recognition, for whatever reason, didn't transfer over, so you probably didn't have that in your packet, but I have those, not a lot have changed, and some of that we'll talk about here anyway. But as far as department heads' reports, anybody have questions on any of those? I think I've got a couple of department heads here. All right. January anniversaries and employee recognition. First, before we even get into that, as I mentioned to you previously, I like to, I want to start getting some of our employees in here on occasions when we can, and it just so happens that I have two new employees in my department, and they can't tell me no, so they had to show up tonight. But I wanted to introduce them, just because it's been nice. We lost Erlene, who had 23 years, I think, between us and South Ogden, and anytime you take a hit like that on an employee, there's a lot of institutional knowledge that you lose there, and it's just hard to replace that. Fortunately, we just lucked out in this hiring round. Nikki Green, Nikki, stand up. Some of you know her. She's a former Riverdale resident. I know she lived by both Brayden and Mayor Searle at different times, so she doesn't live here now. She went to the dark side in that regard, but she did want to come and work for us. We actually stole her from Pleasant View, and I know they're not too happy with us, but we're really happy. Nikki had been out there doing everything, not just court stuff, but the financial stuff and everything like that. So when we brought her in, we replaced that institutional knowledge almost overnight. It was like we didn't have to train her, and it was kind of nice, because her method and Erlene's, we've kind of mixed them together, and it's just been nice. It's just refreshing to have somebody so experienced, and so we're super excited to have her. As long as she quits hitting our building with her car, we'll be in pretty good shape, so. The first time she parked underneath her, she backed into that wall right there and totally destroyed her car. I knew you'd appreciate that, Nikki, but, like I said, they can't do anything to me, because I have the upper hand on that one. But Nikki has been a wonderful joy. And then, in addition to that, I actually stole our next one from upstairs, Raylen Bowman. Raylen was working for Stacy, and we convinced her to come to the light side down here and got her down here. The nice thing about Raylen is she had cross-trained a little bit previously, and then she knows that one system because of upstairs, so we didn't skip a beat with either one of these. In fact, I think we almost got more experience in this hire, so I wanted you to meet them, so you can put that name with that picture that you see occasionally, and they can see you as mayor and council, so happy to have both of them on board. Just, it's been wonderful, and Stacy's not happy with me, but it is what it is, so she got a good one, too, so we came out okay. And finally, and I don't want to, I don't want to miss the beat on this one, because he's here tonight, and it happens to be an anniversary of sort for him, so. As you probably know, we contract our prosecuting out to, it's actually, it was originally Weber County, but we're actually doing Davis County and Weber County both now. Not that we contract out with them, but we steal their employees, they come out and work for us, and both of those prosecutors, the county attorneys have been good to let their people come out. It gives them a little bit of supplemental income that he feels he can't pay them, but we can pay them a little bit more to pick up our duties. Terrell was originally, Terrell, stand up for a second. Why don't you come on up here, because we actually have a thing for you, but Terrell was originally with Weber County, and he just recently switched down and went to Davis County, but under the same conditions, and they're just, we get experienced prosecutors who are just phenomenal, and the two that I have right now have probably been the best two that I've ever worked with, and it's just refreshing, because they don't have to worry about that stuff. And I don't know that they've ever missed between the two of them, they're able to complement each other, and they don't call me down very much, which makes it nice, too, so I don't have to get involved in those things. But since it is his five-year anniversary, mayor has a certificate, and we'll present that to Terrell now, so.
Terrell, Riverdale City, I want to thank you for your five years of service. We have a certificate here for you. And also have a certificate for you, so make sure you enjoy that. I'm very grateful for your service. Just a picture of the campus.
Mayor doesn't have a mask on, everybody else does.
You guys want to take down your masks? All right, getting back to the staffing authorization, as I mentioned, that's not in your packet, but it hasn't changed, the same as it was last month. We are still understaffed by three positions at this point, and that remains in effect. As far as the community development report, I spoke with Mike beforehand. All of his stuff's in the packet, unless you had specific questions for him, he didn't have anything further to add.
I think that's one document that also didn't make it in the packet, Steve.
Oh, it didn't?
No.
Okay.
But the status is pretty much the same with Raising Canes being obviously the new opening, so.
And I will address that rather than do that at the end, just simply because, and I know I blow these guys' horn all the time, but if you went over to the Raising Canes opening, this was a circus. I mean, it was, it could have been a total disaster, but our guys were there and handled it like the ultimate professionals, and even over there, it's crazy to believe this, but there were certain interests, we had this all planned out, and there were certain ways you could come in, certain ways you couldn't, and so people would come in the wrong way, and our officers approached them, just like they always do. People rolled down their window and wouldn't give them a name or tell them any information. I mean, this, even there, it's like, we don't pay these guys enough to put up with what they have to put up with, but we had no issues. I mean, as far as I know, I don't think we ever got out on the Riverdale Road. If we did, it was just very minimal. Scott, anything? Yeah, and we were supposed to end that today, but in talking to Scott earlier this afternoon, they've asked him to hang on for another four or five days, so. Not end it, but if we wouldn't have had him over there, it just would be a disaster, and I think it still will, once our guys are not there, because then the parking lot's going to fill, and we're going to get complaints from the other businesses, which we bent over backwards for them, not only notified them in advance, but we made that so they still had their parking lots and people could get in and out, even delivery trucks. I mean, it was just phenomenal, and those of you who were over there that opening morning, it was colder than cold, and our guys were out there in the middle of that and never complained, and again, Scott, tell your guys thanks, we appreciate it. It was handled as professionally as I think we could have done it, so kudos to them.
Counselor Arnold.
I just wanted to say, Chief, you need to pick up the game on your PT, because Lieutenant Warren was complaining about his knees, so he's not, he's not used to being on his feet. I rolled my widow out, he'd asked for my name, he just said my knees hurt.
I just want to echo Mr. Brooks, I actually want to give him a little pat on the back, too, like, he's, he's obviously not patting himself on the back, but this, there was a lot of planning that went into this. I know there was a lot of stress, there was, we got the road open, I mean, we were pushing the developers, like, it was, it was down to the wire, and there was all sorts of drawings and plans, and it went about as good as we could have hoped with that many hungry, hungry, what do they call them, caniacs trying to get in that place, so. Anyway, thanks to the, all the city staff, and Public Works was involved, everybody was involved, so.
The only bad thing that I saw during that whole week was the grand opening, and I don't know what we do about this, but it's always been a concern of mine, when we have a business where we do all the work and bring it in, and, I mean, we're fully behind it, and then we go to a grand opening, and I can't even find my mayor or my city councilwoman who shows up for the pictures and the ribbon-cutting ceremony because of all the other people that come in, and it's just very frustrating when we see that happen, because it's almost like they forget that Riverdale did this, when in fact, we are the ones who did it, and we should be front and center, and they should be behind us, so. You know, I'll meet with Brayden and see, I'm hoping you guys would back us up on that, because it's just not right. I mean, when they started to do that, I couldn't even see Brayden, and Annie, you can't see her anyway, but in a crowd like that, I mean, it was impossible to find out where she was, and that's just not right. I don't think that should be happening in our city, and so that'll be something we'll have to meet and talk to them about, because I just don't think that should be happening like that. And I know a previous city administrator had some real beef with that, and I can see why. That's worrisome to me. I don't think that should happen, but I have no problem with them coming in, but they shouldn't be front and center, that should be our thing. We had to do a separate picture to get our people included, it was just wrong, but anyway, that's neither here nor there. They're open, people have gotten their chicken strips, I hope you've had your chance to get over there, and we're good to go. We'll wait till our next big opening, which may not be that far, right, Mike? That's all I had, Mayor.
All right, thanks, Mr. Brooks. All right, we'll now move on to consent items. First consent item, consideration to approve the meeting minutes for our January 4th council work session and council meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, we need a motion to approve, Mr. Arnold.
Move to approve, move to approve consent items.
Sorry, thought he was done. Counselor Hilton. Okay.
I was, I just stuttered.
We have a motion, and we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, seeing none, that passes unanimously. Second consent item would be consideration to appoint Brayden Mitchell to the Weber Sewer Improvement District Board of Trustees. Any questions or discussion on that item? If not, a motion would be in order.
All moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, that's a motion to appoint or approve, right?
Yes.
And a second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move on to our first action item, consideration of final site plan approval for Take Five Automotive and Fizz Drinks. Now, there's two items under this number one. We're going to start with the final site plan first. This is located approximately 4021 and 4023 South Riverdale Road. Mr. Eggit.
Thank you, Mayor. Representatives for this group, Tabor Cope, who's present in the back, so if you have any questions for him, he'll be the one that can come up and address them for you. This site is a joint site with Fizz Drinks and Take Five Oil Change. Did come before the Planning Commission on September 28th, wherein the Planning Commission provided favorable recommendations to city council for approval of the proposed site plan that's found in your packet, due to the use as an automobile repair, including paint, body, and fender, brake, muffler, upholstery, et cetera. There was a conditional use permit required for the site. This matter came before the Planning Commission on October 12th, wherein the Planning Commission approved the conditional use permit for the use of that location. All the material is found in your packet, subject to this item, and the general plan guidance for this area is planned commercial high, and I think we covered a lot of the other topics in the work session, so to not belabor the point, I will defer to the council if you have questions of me and/or the applicant group.
Is there any questions? There were a couple of points of discussion from our public works director.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there were a few comments in the packet of his, just that there's, there's two items that Mr. Cope, hopefully you've seen, that will need to be addressed before a building permit can be issued, and resolving those items.
I think it would be good to include those.
Is that a development agreement?
That's just on the site plan.
It's on the site plan, right?
Yeah, it's tied to the site plan itself.
So that would be good to include that in our motion.
Certainly something you can include in your motion, yeah.
Counselor Arnold.
I would move to approve the final site plan, based on the comments that are in the packet from our public work director and any other department heads, as stated, otherwise within the packet.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's okay to not do a roll call on that, right? Because it's just an approval. Okay, second item, that passes unanimously. Second item, consideration of resolution 2022-01 for approval of a development agreement. Mr. Eggit.
Thank you, this is, as you know, the second part. This is due to the zoning of the site being a planned regional commercial CP3 use, and that zoning designation requires that a development agreement and a development plan for the site, which is the site plan in this case, be approved by the council due to its location in the, in the city. And that being said, there was one noted point in the work session that we discussed, that the naming would be Blue Loop Properties LLC, and this is more for Mr. Cope to be aware, that that development agreement should have that, and then the resolution should also have that as the naming entity. And again, to not belabor the point, because we discussed in the work session, I would defer to the council if you have any questions for me or Mr. Cope at this time.
Any questions? Okay, if not, a motion would be in order. Counselor Arnold.
Move to approve Resolution 2022-01, as stated within the packet, with the name change that Mr. Eggit has described.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Counselor Stevens, it's a resolution, let's do a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 All right, very good, it looks like it passes unanimously. Okay, we'll now move on to our next action item, number two. This is consideration interviewing and voting for a new city council member to fill a midterm vacancy. As we start this process, I came across a quote yesterday, and I thought it kind of fit what we're going to go through here with it being Martin Luther King Day yesterday. This is a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. It says, "Everybody can be great because anybody can serve. You don't have to have a college degree to serve. You don't have to make your subject and verb agree to serve. You only need a heart full of grace and a soul generated by love." And so I just wanted to thank each of these candidates tonight, there's eight of them, we're only picking one. I was very impressed, as I read all the applications, all the information that was submitted. It made me kind of proud to think that all these people live in Riverdale, to be honest. They were, they were very impressive, and I thought, wow, what a great group of residents, and I'm glad we had eight people come out that were willing to kind of, you know, throw their hat in the ring and try to, try to help out the city where they could, so I just wanted to congratulate all of you for at least signing up, so. Well, that will turn some time over to Mr. Brooks.
All right, I will just, if you aren't familiar with the format here, you can see the names up there, those were randomly chosen in the work meeting just prior to you coming in here, and that is the order that you will sit in, and you see that we have the chairs up here, so we're really putting you on the hot seat, front and center, so we'd ask that you come up here. The way this works is, and two of those are going to be really close together, but Wendy is not here, she will be joining us by a phone call, so don't worry about those chairs. We tried to space them out a little bit, so you don't feel uncomfortable sitting too close to somebody. How this will work is, the council has received all the information that you guys have submitted, they've had the opportunity to review all that material. They will each have the opportunity to ask two questions. We will go in in order of them asking the questions. Now, they don't have to, it's their choice whether they do or not. Don't read anything into it one way or another, if they don't, that was just their choice, and I think Bart has mentioned that he's not going to, he felt that the material you submitted was enough for him to make a decision on. So anyway, we will go down and we will take turns, so in the very first question, question number one, that Alan will ask, Rick, you will start that off, and we will follow that order coming down through here. Then, when you've all had the same chance to answer that question, then we'll move on to the next question, and then we'll go here with Jay, okay? And then come down this way and then come back to Rick, so that we, we're always rotating, it's not the same person every time, okay? And you can see you have two minutes to answer, that is up there. We would ask you to step up to the podium and do your response there. We talked about a mic, but we didn't know that that would be too good with everybody handling it, so come up to the podium, give your response then, and then take your seat back. Any questions on any of that?
And just so you know, we have tried very, very hard to make this, you know, as unbiased as we can, with all kinds of randomizations, and, I mean, we've done everything we possibly feel like we can, so.
Mr. Mayor, can I be heard?
Yes.
I would like to recuse myself, first disclosing that I have a family connection to one of the candidates, and recuse myself from the process.
Okay, very well, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
Sure.
First of all, I acknowledge that all of you, pretty much all of you are friends of mine, so having said that, my last election, which was the one just prior to this last one, I accepted very few donations, but one of them was from the Wasatch Board of Realtors, and Lori Fleming was a part of that board. It involved an interview with the entire board, but I know Lori was involved, just wanted to disclose that.
Thank you.
Maybe, Mayor, if we, Annie, could you give us a little bit, is it your intentions to recuse yourself for the whole process, or just a process that would involve your family member? I just want to be clear, so if, if you say your family member didn't make it, and that's how it works, we do a first round to eliminate the numbers down, and then there's a second round, so if your family member was eliminated during the first round, do you intend on not voting in the second round?
I think if I'm not participating in the first round, I would recuse myself from the second, just due to not participating, and I think that would be best, just to make it a clean, clear cut that I'm not involved, just for the sake of ethics, just a clean cut off.
And I don't care, I mean, Mr. Chair, I would maybe defer to you on that, because the chairman can actually make you vote in cases if he doesn't feel that there's.
Get your gavel, Brayden.
If the conflict's not there, I don't see why you couldn't, but it's up to you, and if the rest of the council feels accordingly, that's fine, too.
I'll defer to the chair, of course.
Okay, we can deal with that on the second round, see what happens, so. I just wanted to make sure that we were open on that, too, so that it's not weird if something came back after or something like that, so.
All right, are we ready to start?
Now Wendy will be in that chair right there, in the position, whatever, between you two, I don't know what numbers you are, but right there, so.
We're ready for you, so we're going to just go through, just listen for your name to answer the questions. And the order will be changing every time, I don't know if you're logged into YouTube, but you are seven, I'm eight, so we'll go through and have multiple questions asked in order.
Where would I find you on YouTube?
If you go to riverdellcity.com.
It's on the agenda. Yeah, she won't want to follow the YouTube, because it'll throw her behind too much, she's got to stay on this for her questions.
He said you're going to want to listen to the, listen to your phone, turn off the sound on the YouTube, because it's going to have a little bit of a delay.
Okay. All right. I've got YouTube on, and I'm listening to you on the phone.
Okay. We'll get started.
Okay.
Okay, Counselor Arnold.
First of all, I wanted to say thank you for submitting your packets. Counselor Stevens has mentioned, it's a lot of information in there, but I wanted to ask a question about June of this prior year and the election. Why or why not did you not run for office in that opportunity, and what did you learn while you were running or during the election?
Thank you for the opportunity to, for me to answer that question, Counselor Arnold. I, I did run for city council once, many years ago, and that was a really good experience for me. I'm currently serving on the City Planning Commission, and as a member of the City Planning Commission, I enjoy the service that I do there. I did consider possibly running, but when I saw the people who were putting in their names to run for city council, I felt comfortable with those that were doing that, and so didn't feel the, the need to put my name in to run against those that were running at that time. I did feel that this would be a different opportunity, and so consultation with my wife and family, decided that this would be a good opportunity to, to possibly serve the city as a member of the city council.
Evening.
That's, mic's not on.
All right.
Much better.
Very good.
Why didn't you think of that?
So, to answer your question, did not run in June, did not consider running in June. Logistically, I have young children, they're just now getting into school age, things are opening up a little bit, it's also been busy at work. It's something that's been in the back of my mind for a while, and just hasn't logistically been possible, and just hasn't been a decision I've made. My wife noticed in the city newsletter recently, mentioned it seems like a good opportunity, and that was the motivation, it's always kind of been there and brewing, it seemed like the appropriate time.
Lori Fleming, the reason I chose not to run in June, my mother has had some real health issues, and we couldn't figure out what was going on. She had actually passed out in church, and just recently she had a heart attack. Matter of fact, she's calling me right now. She, we took her to the hospital, she's had a stent put in, and she's doing absolutely wonderful now, so now I feel it's the time that I can serve and help out where now I've got the family taken care of.
Hi, Jody Brown. I did not choose to run in June, because I have had a series of surgical procedures that kept me out of the public eye for quite some time. I had to plan a couple of months to be down, and now that my health is doing better, and that I am able to plan my time more, I wanted to run. I have been planning to run for a number of years, waiting for the right time and season of life, and actually decided after watching the process in the fall, that next time I would choose to run, and had already made up my mind that I would do that, and then I saw the notification come through the beginning of January that there was an open seat, and decided that rather than waiting for the election, I would take the opportunity to apply now. And to be very honest, elections can get dirty and mean, and I am not a dirty or mean person, so this seemed like a nice way to have the opportunity to get involved, and I am excited to have the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
So, in June, some of the staff can attest, I was here, ready to sign up to run against Brayden, because I'm not a, I'm not a big fan of unopposed, you know, whether you like the guy or not, I just, I don't know, it just doesn't sit well, so. I was sitting here at the last day, the last few minutes, and in comes Doug, so I hoofed it out of there, I said, that's great, I'm out of here. And the, as far as running for the council, Annie surprised us all by signing up early on, and that's not. on and that's not something I was gonna, to mess with and I'd wanted to sit back and support her and, and the city made a great choice and now there's another spot where it doesn't have to be that way, going against her, so I thought I'd throw my hat in the ring, that's all.
So is it my turn now?
Um, one more and then you.
Karina Merrill, so I did choose to run in June and I'm so grateful that I did. It definitely was a huge learning opportunity for me to just meet so many amazing people of Riverdale that I had never had the chance, I guess, or the platform really, to take advantage of. Just shaking so many hands and really looking people in the eyes and giving them my honest word that I would be a leader who listens. I, I felt like what motivated me to run was definitely just some of the experiences that I had had with just some of the issues with some of the, you know, employees of Riverdale and that's a whole story in and of itself that we don't need to go into here, but I felt like maybe my voice wasn't being heard as a resident and I, that really sunk deep for me because my whole background is in listening to people and communicating with people and when I felt like I was not able to communicate or be communicated with effectively, that was really hard for me. So I really, I would say it lit a fire in me to be a part of the bigger system, to make sure that I trust myself and know myself enough to present myself to the community, to say that I honor the residents and the things that they go through and I feel like I have the, an advantage, so to speak, in my background in human communication, I guess, to try to understand people better. And so that's definitely, I felt like I was able to be understood and I was able to understand others better and that was definitely a, a plus. So I'm really grateful that I did run and all the things that I learned here while running in Riverdale.
Okay, Wendy, you're up. You have two minutes.
Oh, okay. I didn't run in June because, well, we had chatted about it for several years, in fact, we started chatting about one of us run for office when Bruce Burrows was running for an office. So it's been on the back of our mics for quite a while. As far as running in June, there were so many wonderful people that are, that were running that I didn't feel like that was the right time for me to do that. And now that I have this opportunity, instead of running a campaign, I felt like I could come in and really help and I don't want to say fulfill a calling, but fulfill a need in the city that maybe I could, could step up to the plate and, and serve as so many others have served me. I'm surprised at how many wonderful people there are that are also applying for this. We are so lucky to live in Riverdale and have so many great people that are willing to step up and help, so thanks for the opportunity.
Hi, Colleen Henstra. I had a birthday party when I was 16 and nobody showed up for it. And that is like my biggest fear in running for city council is that nobody would vote for me and I know that's like the silliest thing ever, but I have thought about running for city council for many years and my husband keeps prodding me and saying, you should really run. And as I look at all the candidates every year, I see things like I've served on the planning commission for 40 years and I have all of this experience in government and I have no local government experience. I have worked for the federal government for 20 years, completely different, of course, but as I was looking at your bios and I was seeing that this, this opportunity was open, I thought, you know what, I have something to offer that is a little bit different. I feel, I have a lot of leadership experience, 13 years serving with IRS and one of my biggest things as a leader is the servant leadership and part of servant leadership is serving our community. I've kind of invested that with my kids, we come out and we serve as well and so this is really a great opportunity for me to give back to the city that has really done so much for our family. We, we absolutely loving living here and I really look forward to any opportunity in the future as well to, to help serve Riverdale.
All right. So now we will move on to Counselor Stevens.
I just want to say thank you to all of you for putting in your application, put yourself out there because it does take a lot of, you know, you're, you're exposing yourself to agree and possible rejection, to the point where it's like, do I really want to go through this? And I'm, and I'm glad that each of you have chose to participate because going through the resumes have been really eye-opening as to, I mean, I think I know everybody here, but I don't know you, I know who you are. And seeing your backgrounds has been very enlightening to me and I appreciate you doing that. I do not have any questions because I have been found what I needed in your packets. Thank you for putting in such good resumes, our applications, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll move on to Counselor Hilton.
Okay, I'll also add my thanks to you for all doing this. It really is an honor to be associated with all of you. It's, it's embarrassing to put in your name and, and expose your, your feelings and your reputation to probable ridicule, we plan on ridiculing you all later. But thank you again. Looking at your resumes, I, I know you, but I'm shocked at, at the quality of your resumes, so congratulations. My question is kind of a play or a version of Alan's, great minds think alike, but mine is future looking. So my question is, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but as you sit here tonight, whether you are the candidate chosen or not, do you expect to run for city council in the next election?
So forward-looking, I would probably look into a planning commission position first before running for city council. It's an abrupt step, that being said, I feel I'm capable, I bring, I think, I think everybody here is very capable, it sounds like, I don't know everyone as well as you do, it sounds like, but um, I want to do well at the things I do. I'm not interested in this type of position for prestige or any kind of personal benefit. I was interested in participating because I wanted to ensure that the city had good representation that would be interested in equity and equity is very important to me. So I would not say I'm not interested in a future city council position, but it would be a, a decision that I would make with considerable thought and based on the situation and the timing at that moment, so, yeah, but thank you.
Again, that's a very hard question to answer because you don't know what the future's going to bring, but as I have served on the Board of Directors for the Northern Wasatch, I put in 13 years there. I've just now been elected to, by the, by the governor as the Utah Housing Corporation trustees and that's an eight-year term. So I have been committed to what I go into. My whole reason for doing this to begin with was we don't have a whole lot of representation on the south side of Riverdale. There's a lot of development, residential development that's going to be happening over there and it's really important to have the eyes over there to see what's going on and to see how that's going to, to benefit and how it's going to expose not only those that are there now, but those that are coming up. And so that was one of the reasons why I stepped up and said, you know what, I've, I know what's going on. I've had multiple candidates throughout the years or multiple council people through the, throughout the years, women and men, call me and ask their viewpoints. So I have something to offer because they've called me before to ask me for my input. So I just want to let you know I'd be honored to serve and, and we'll see what the next two years bring and we'll go from there. Thank you.
My answer is I would plan to do so, all conditions willing. And I have been a member of the Chamber of Commerce and I am a business ambassador for Ogden City and Weaver County and I was at the ribbon cutting at Cane's. As a side note, I will take your comments back to the chamber and let them know that there was some feelings regarding that, but on the plus side, I've gotten to be part of many great business things that are happening in our town and our city. However, I haven't gotten to be on the part where I have been able to help make the choices and make the decisions that affect who actually is able to come. We simply celebrate those who come and I would love to be able to be part of the decision-making that goes to who and how those plans take place. And in addition to that, I also am a firm believer that in order to secure our future, we have to make plans now and I know that there are some big changes coming with some revenue losses that are going to be coming up from tax changes and I want to make sure that Riverdale is going to be in a place where we can have a sustainable future and be able to accommodate future generations because it is a great place to live, but we have to continue to make sure it's going to be a great place to live and we have to do that by preparing now. So my plan was to run next cycle and hopefully, all willing, I will be able to do that whether as an incumbent or whether as a first-time candidate. Thank you.
Yes.
So I as well do plan on running again. I also want to explore looking at options of serving other areas in Riverdale if possible, if positions open up there, I would love to serve in whatever capacity. Like how I said earlier, I just felt like this has been a great learning experience in general to, to, to run and it really helped me to see in myself if that's something that I wanted to do because elections can get ugly, like you said, and, and it is hard to put yourself out there, it really is. You kind of feel like you have a target on your back among people that you never even thought knew you and now all of a sudden they're targeting you and so, but I think that it really helps you to see in yourself if this is what you really want to do and I do feel like it is. For, for me anyways, I know that this is what I want to do whether now or in the future, that's a decision that I have already made and want to stick to, so thank you.
My answer is probably, but I would have to see what's happening in my life in two years. I kind of like the idea of disappointment so that I could get to know what is required and what's expected and how I end with the council. I know that I love Riverdale and have lived here for 20 years, so yeah, I would say that probably yes.
I think my answer depends on how much mockery takes place. All joking aside, I, my kids, I have five children and two son-in-laws and they're all local to Riverdale except for my one daughter who goes to school farther away. But this morning I got a text from them cheering me on and then another one earlier this evening while I was sitting back there, come on, mom, you've got it. And I figure, you know, despite any fear that I have about running for an office, if I've got my family backing me, I think I can do this.
It's difficult to, to give a definite yes, two years out, but my plan would be at this point to, to pursue that, depending on what the situation is at the time. I've been in Riverdale since 1987 and I've lived on both sides, south and north side of Riverdale. So I, I feel like I have a very good understanding of, of the needs of the city. I know very well people on both the north and the south side of the city and, and have for, for a number of years raised my, my children here and, and so on and so forth. So plus I've spent over 30 years as a restaurant general manager and so I have a lot of leadership training and, and responsibility and because I've been on the City Planning Commission, I've had the opportunity over the last several years to get training on land use and, and those types of things, which is going to be a, a huge issue and continues to be a big issue in, in our city and, and in the way things develop based on the guidelines that are given to us by the, by the state. And so having had that opportunity and serving there, I, I do feel like that I have a good understanding of the, those needs and, and the direction that, that we are being asked to, to go in the city. So I do appreciate the opportunity to be able to serve and, and have wanted to do that for some, for a number of years. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we're back to you, Counselor Arnold.
Yeah, I, I didn't have another question, so the, the only question that did come up in my mind with this format, there's, there's no way to, to, to ask it, I guess, properly to, to give each person a fair, you know, open answer, so I mean, Lori would go first and then everybody else would kind of have the answer-ish, so you know, I'll, I'll just call it good.
Okay.
So there we go.
I think my heart was pounding a little bit.
Yeah, Steve, I can see swell.
I saw our human resources director was kind of up, she was perched like.
Here it comes, we knew it.
I had my hand on the gavel, like, so, yeah, all the mics, everything would have gone dark, all the power.
I was looking for the face.
Okay.
I'll ask it to each one of you individually later.
I do have one other question and it also is a follow-up and some of you have already answered it, but if you're not the person seated on the council tonight, do you expect to actually put your name in and serve on the planning commission?
I think that question was already answered with the first question.
It was.
You know, so I don't know that there's much more to say, other than, you know, you've got to see what two years brings.
Well, and you, you've been on the planning commission.
Yeah, I've been on the planning commission, I've been on, yeah, so, yeah, you could be on the planning commission, I'll appoint you. Done.
I think that's up to Brayden.
But Alan said I would go first and everybody'd agree.
Oh, that was his question.
I didn't ask it.
I agree.
Who is that?
I concur, I stick with my previous response.
I wouldn't do that, but I'd throw out that I would hope the mayor and council would maybe consider this list of names up there when, when they're looking at those appointments or maybe when we're doing a park committee or something like that, look to these names that were willing to put themselves out there and get involved, but no, I wouldn't go for the planning commission.
You also have served on the planning commission.
I have not served on the planning commission, but I would absolutely love to and I agree that keep everyone in mind here, if they're willing to serve, then keep that in mind for the planning commission as well, so thank you so much also for your questions, I appreciate it.
I, I don't know, I don't know what it entails, so I can't say if I would or if I wouldn't. So I'm going to say, I don't know. But I wouldn't mind looking into it.
I'd rather have your vote tonight, but I would take planning commission as well. I think it'd be a great opportunity to serve.
Thank you. I know on the planning commission, we serve at the discretion of the mayor, so I would hope that I would continue to serve on the planning commission as I am now and will be happy to serve as long as the mayor would, would like to have me on there.
So I kind of already answered it, but I do believe, excuse me, good societies and good cities come from good people making good decisions and I realize that I'm kind of wading into the waters here and absolutely would be interested and my whole goal is to try to be somebody who's good, making good decisions and be involved, so thank you.
All right, thank you for your answers. I, I, I did take this list and pretty much commit it to memory when something comes up, you're all going to be getting calls for all sorts of things in the future, I can guarantee it, so thank you for being willing to help. Okay, so now I guess comes the voting and Mr. Brooks?
Stacy, Stacy will, you'll see the ballots here when you get those, she'll hand those out, fill out your vote, she will collect those and she and Michelle will, will count them and read that off, so.
Just vote for one, right?
That is correct.
Don't talk about the first and the second.
The one that's got Annie's name crossed off and Bart's.
And the way the code reads is the top candidates move on to a second round of votes.
The top candidates.
The code, state code says top two candidates, but realistically, it could be three, I mean, depending on the votes. So when we when we did our resolution, it just says the top candidates.
Is the suspense killing you yet? Okay, we have one vote for Corina Merrill. Sorry, that was Arnold. Mr. Stevens, we have a vote for Jody Brown. And Mr. Hilton, we have a vote for Lori Fleming.
Okay, congratulations, those three will move on to the second round. We do thank the rest of you for applying, like we said.
Can I say something? Just just so you can, if if anyone would like to reach out to me, or I'm sure any one of the council members would want to talk to us, going through an election is rough. I mean, this this is rough, I would think. But you you declare in June, and that's why I asked this question, is you declare in June, and you can buzz me if anything, going through going through the election is so hard. Because Brayden and I were friends prior to the council, and, you know, I've I've known each one of these individuals prior to. And when you you sign your name to go on this thing and you're printing your signs and trying to organize, you know, so if you have any intention of running, please reach out to me or any one of us to get some tips and all that kind of stuff to run through that, because it is a sticky, even Rick and I ran our first times together. And it's it's not a fun process, but I'd love to be you know, on advisory somewhat, even if I'm I'm probably running next time, too. So, you know, but I would I would love to do that.
Counsel Stevens.
Just to, you know, if you can find somebody to mentor you and maybe point you in directions and say this pros or cons, this works for you, this may or may not, this, if you're on a budget, or if you have if you have means. This last cycle, not necessarily in Riverdale, because I was I was running, I I mentored two other people in other campaigns. So I would be happy to to mentor, talk to you about, like with Councilman Arnold, because it is, I had people, when I put my my name in a little over four years ago, I reached out and I had some people reach out to me that gave me valuable information. And I would be happy to impart some of the wisdom of of my experience. And please, if you've thought about it, I hope we can talk in the future.
Counsel Hanson, now that your family member is no longer in, I would I would, I'm not going to force you to vote, but I would ask you to please reconsider. This is somebody that needs to, that you're going to need to work with on the council. I don't think there would be any conflict in you voting in this second round. You've heard the answers, you have you've participated, so what do you think?
Can I, can I, just just as a declaration, in our previous meeting, she declared her that she was going to abstain, and I objected on for this very moment. So just just so it's on the record.
I would rather not be the tiebreaker. But if we if we decided that we could have some discussion prior to the second vote, I would be open to to that amongst the council. I can't remember if we decided on that.
No decision was made, that'd be something the council would have to decide if you wanted to have further discussions. It does have to be in the open meeting. But that's, it would have to be a majority decision as well.
Like a consensus that we're going to have a discussion?
Right.
And Counsel Stevens?
If there's only three voting council members, do we still have to have, does it have to be unanimous before it goes to the cards, I can two?
This next vote, if it's a tie, we go to the cards.
Okay, if there's three votes.
I guess, I guess if there were three.
I misunderstood, are you in or out?
She's on the fence.
She's on the fence, but let's finish your question, let's finish your question.
So if there's three council members voting.
And they vote for three separate people.
Or, okay, then we know it's a tie.
And it goes to the cards, then that person wins.
Okay.
Steve's like, yeah.
Because that's that's not a majority of the council.
That's the majority of the quorum. But but as as a not going to say senior member. I've been on, I've been on for 10 years, and I I think you're obligated. You you ran for office, that's what we do. And sometimes the decisions, and not very often do they get dicey, but sometimes they do. And it's like, there's a there's a time to step in the mud and go, that's what I signed up for. So if that doesn't, if that doesn't guilt you into anything, I don't know if it does.
I'll I'll make a comment to counter or try to counter that guilt. You know, I I support Annie's councilman, councilperson Hanson's decision to opt out of both, despite full disclosure that she didn't have to. And so if that's what she chooses to do, I think that's her personal conscience.
Well, I guess you can abstain anytime, right?
Yeah. So do we want to, do we want to have a consensus on whether we're going to discuss this? Is that, so?
Can I just, real quick?
Yeah.
Wendy, you're welcome to hang up if you want to just watch the rest of this on YouTube.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks for the opportunity.
You bet.
Just to get rid of that background noise.
So it will be a guided discussion, like I will call on people to share their thoughts if if we do this, right? And it'll be all in favor of of discussing the candidates, is that?
Right, I would just set out your parameters, what you're going to do. I don't know if you had something in mind, Annie, but just so we spell it out really well, and then just take a vote on it, it's either a yes or a no.
I suggest let Annie tell us what she has in mind.
Well, I was just thinking, because it was such, it was a completely split vote, you know, just what the thoughts are, in case any one of you could be persuaded to vote a different way, that that might be useful for all of us to know your line of thinking, or if that's not appropriate, then I'm willing to just go ahead and participate and vote.
I would be in favor of.
Of a discussion?
I would not.
Yeah, I would not either.
Okay, yeah, I'm willing to vote if you'd like me to, Mayor.
I would like you to vote.
Okay.
So do you say discussion or no discussion?
Yeah, I think that's, oh, all those in, all those in favor of having a discussion, raise your hand. Two.
There you go, break the tiebreaker.
I mean, it's only fair.
Yeah, well, I I'm going to say that we're going to have a discussion.
Okay.
So raise your hand if you have something to discuss. Counsel Arnold?
I always go first. If you would like to go first, I'll definitely defer.
You'll have to make me mayor pretend for that to happen, right? Bump me up the line?
I won't be bumping on. So my, I I have, I I'm one of the council members that has called Lori in the past. Her knowledge of real estate and development is is beyond anyone that I know in that world, and I do know her, I don't know if you call him a partner, but office chairperson, and you know, so, you know, I have been one of those people that called Lori that she's talking about. And Jody is amazing in all that you do. But the reason I voted for Corina is I I think that the the population, and I understand it's not a part of this particular thing, but I I think going through an election, third place, which it wasn't, there was four candidates in the in the race. And there was, I think, Annie got the most amount of votes, then Bart, and then Corina was, I don't even know, a percentage behind, but it wasn't, it wasn't a landslide. There was one of the four that really didn't put a lot of effort into it, a couple of signs, but didn't knock, but knocking doors, making signs and all that kind of stuff, it's just, my my vote is going with the population. Is is, I I'm not, I don't know what kind of council member she would be, or but my vote would be for Corina, just because she is the the population's vote. The the third place, we're putting three, we knew that Brayden was going to be unopposed mayor. So we were going to have three, and so that's that's my reasoning for that, I I just think the population has, I'm going to vote with the, there were 700 and some odd people that voted for Corina, and my, so I'm voting my vote for them, is how I'm doing that.
Okay, anybody else? Counsel Hilton?
Yeah, I yeah, I think I voted for Lori because I have tremendous respect for the time and effort that Lori has put into serving the city, years on the planning commission. But in addition to that, she probably attends more city council meetings than any of us up here, because before we were elected, she was still participating in council meetings. I know some of that is work related, but a lot of it is not, it's just a personal interest. And so I think Lori has earned our respect. Corina, I I know you're new at this, you did get a significant number of votes, you did get second place. But I I, third place, sorry.
Sorry, Bart.
But I don't know that that meets the qualifications of of the time some of these people have spent in civic duty. I appreciate that you you're throwing your name in, but you're kind of, don't take this disrespectfully, but you still have your training wheels on. And so you, I don't mean that to be any derogatory comment at all, you're just, you're new to this compared to some of the other folks that have had tremendous leadership experience, if not direct civic experience. Jody, I I think the entire city respects you, and you'd be an outstanding choice on the city council, and and I support you for that. And if you're the eventual winner, then I then I'd be happy, so just know that.
Anyone else? Okay, Counsel Stevens, I knew we had something.
No, I don't, but Councilman Hanson, Councilperson Hanson asked to do this, and I was waiting for her to to say, because she wanted to do it.
Yeah.
But I'm I'm, I mean, I can, as I went through everybody's application, I took, there there are things about being on the city council, until you're here, you really don't realize what transpires and what limitations you have in things you can do. Because you might come in with some some aspirations to change this, or be involved in and influence this, that, or the other, and it's just like, unless you have a consensus of three votes, you really, you know, you can, you know. And so I have, I personally have valued my voice and my vote, that I can speak here, and I have the attention of mayor and staff, and I can vote. And I value that tremendously, and I and I use that judiciously. Now, everybody in their packets put in things that are, I'll just say it, pie in the sky. Now, more often than not, it's based on just naivety of what you can and really can't do, it's mostly what you can't do. But that said, it's great to have that kind of optimism and to see that kind of of desire to to affect, change, to affect, to make things happen. And I and I find that tremendously encouraging. That said, I just, I'm going to leave it at that. It's neutral, it's not, but it's it's just like, if you if you get on, I just don't think you're going to be able to do what you put in the packet you're going to be able to do, because there's a process. And but that doesn't mean you still can't be involved, and I would still encourage everybody to be involved. Okay, I'm done.
I don't think I have any.
Okay, I think Counsel Hanson's main point in doing that was to find out what exactly each of you are thinking, as scary as that is. I think that was probably, or hopefully at least a little helpful to her. So with that, I think we'll go ahead and fill out your final ballots, right? We'll turn those in to Ms. Como.
Can't really reach.
Okay. Councilmember Arnold, we have a vote for Corina Merrill. Councilmember Hanson has voted for Corina Merrill. Councilmember Hilton has voted for Jody Brown. Councilmember Stevens has voted for Jody Brown. So we have a tie, two for Ms. Merrill and two for Ms. Brown.
Well, isn't this exciting? So we're going to take it, the process to its final step, which is defined by the state of Utah, and we draw lots. And the way that we have decided to do that is we will have a deck of cards, we will choose one suit or of cards. And I can't believe it's come down to this, is how we're going to choose our city council member for the next two years, but this is how it is.
It's somewhat ironic that you, we live in a state where games of chances are prohibited. And yet, when I have to consider a new council member, we have to do a game of chance to decide who it is.
Well, and should we say is the ace the high card or the low?
Ace is the high, ace, king, queen, so on down, ace is the high.
Yeah, let's get that defined. Ace is the high card, yes.
This is a new deck of cards, I just opened it, you probably all, I'm doing my magic tricks now, not really. I've been shuffling them, we're only using one suit. So there's not going to be any question of of suit value. They're all spades, I'm going to keep mixing them while I'm talking, just just in case. I don't know if you guys, if I can just hold them out and you guys can grab one at the same time, if you want, or?
I would do that, yeah.
Okay.
You go for the same card at the same time.
Oh, my God.
Oh, my gosh.
I won a three and a four.
Oh, wow. Wow.
Good job.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, I guess Corina Merrill will be our new city council member, congratulations to you. And yeah, let's.
May I just add that for somebody that's going to run in two years, I'm scared to death, because if you're running, it's like, it's going to take some major work, because, yeah, so, for me.
Yeah, he's scared for himself. To clarify, not scared for you. Yeah, of course, it will get ugly, so. Oh, yeah, that's you that doesn't want it to get ugly. No, it was you. Okay, so, okay, well, that concludes that action item. Do we want Ms. Merrill to come up here with this, or?
She'll do this.
Well, you'll get a swear, and that's the next thing, and we go swearing in of the new city council member.
Oh, man, we're going to lose our space.
You're going to lose your space. Wait till our new city administrator gets up here.
No.
It's really going to get tight again.
Okay. Right hand, repeat after me. I, say your name.
I, Corina Merrill.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend.
Defend. The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the state of Utah.
And the state of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
I know, I don't.
You got to put that one in first, I'm sorry. It's a, it's a, it's like a link puzzle, I won't do it for each motion. That's the one the judge sits in, so he's protecting himself with that bar. That's the one the judge sits in, so he's protecting himself with that bar.
Well, this is an exciting time. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you so much.
All right, we'll now move on to action item number four, selection of a mayor pro tem. This will go through like a nomination process. This is the person that will conduct the meetings when I am not here and may attend other events in my place, so. Do we have any nominations?
So, just a note, you, you, would you, you said that the mayor pro tem was gonna be doing more than you did as mayor pro tem. Could you explain that a little bit?
Well.
Because if someone can say,
Yeah.
I'm unavailable for that kind of stuff, because I know we have a lot of stuff here on your plate, so.
So, the mayor pro tem will, one of the main things they'll do is run the city council meeting when the mayor is not there. If I say anything wrong, let me know. And our previous mayor was retired, and he had a, a lot of, a lot of time, and he very rarely missed any event or any city council meetings. And I am in a little different position. I have a full-time job. I have a, a younger family, and there will probably come occasions where I am not able to be at the city council meeting. Those will be still pretty rare, but not as rare as they have been. And so, the mayor pro tem will probably have to conduct a meeting. I don't think I ever conducted a meeting until Norm's second term, you know, and maybe, until the very end, maybe two total. So, that's all I meant by that.
So, you're not talking going down to the Capitol and, I mean, in your stead?
I don't, I, I work a full-time job. I, I do what I can. It's somewhat flexible. Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's somewhat flexible, but it could, it could involve anything that I do, yeah. I'll try to keep it to a minimum. Counselor Arnold?
I would be glad to nominate Annie Hanson.
Okay, we have a nomination of Annie Hanson. It would require a second, if we're gonna vote on her.
Second?
We have a second. Okay.
I'll be glad to nominate Alan Arnold.
Okay.
That requires a second.
That would require a second as well.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. So, all those in favor of.
How does this work? What if you gotta vote for yourself? Let's draw cards.
Oh, there you go. There you go. High card wins or loses.
I think we gotta vote on this. Do we wanna vote? Yeah, I, I think we gotta vote. So, all those in favor of Counselor Hanson, raise your hand. We have two votes. All those in favor of Counselor Arnold, raise your hands. We have two votes, so we have a tie. Break that one. Let's see. That's a hard decision. Who, who, who? Who I wanna punish the worst? I, I think.
I'll vote for Alan.
Okay, and there's, there's the tiebreaker right there, so. Okay, so Counselor Arnold, welcome. You're our newest mayor pro tem, so I'm excited to have you do that, so. And I, I, I think that'll be good. You have the seniority, so. All right. Okay, so now, we're to our comments section. Is there any comments from the city council? Any comments from the city staff?
We have nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
I did have, I had two, two quick comments. Well, actually, the Raising Canes, I already mentioned that. I had my first resident reach out to me about our police department, and I've been dreading this day. But I wanted to report to Chief Brinkman. I had a resident reach out to me, and I've been nervous about that ever since I took office. It took two weeks. But anyway, they were complimenting our police department, thankfully. So, I believe they might have sent you an email too. I encourage them to send you an email. Maybe you haven't seen it yet, but we had a couple of officers that responded to a husband and wife. The wife was in a, kind of a psychiatric crisis, and she doesn't do well with police, and the wrong thing probably could have sent her right over the edge, he said. And he was very grateful. Our police demonstrated complete professional, you know, conduct and behavior. And Officer Lovato especially was able to just kinda, he, he, he made a point that he knelt, knelt down in his full body armor and, and, and spent some time with her at her side. And I know we've worked on training them better for these situations and stuff, and so, just reporting back that that is, that's paying dividends, and he was more than grateful about that. So, thank you to the police department. I'll take those kind of calls any day of the week. So, with that, I don't have anything else. So, we are, we do have a closed executive session on the agenda to discuss the character, professional competence, or health of an individual. Anyone make a motion to go into a closed session?
Some moved.
There's a motion, and we have a second. Roll call vote for that. Ms. Maragoni? Thank you to the members of the public. We appreciate you being here tonight. Alan, Counselor Arnold?
I did.
Steve, make sure you stick around. This won't take very long. It's never been on.
Did you turn it off? It's never been on? I think it's the camera.
She's asking if you're willing to go into session.
Oh, sorry. I'm an I. It's to which camera? That's to my office. Oh.
Hey, just so you guys know, this door is locked for the outside, so we'll shut it when we leave, but you're gonna have to open it when you're done, or nobody will be able to come back in.
We, we want these two to stick around. This won't take long.
Okay, so.
Aye.
We have an I. Counselor member Hilton?
Aye.
Counselor member Stevens?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor member Arnold?
Aye.